We expect in August.
Good, Tony's here.
It's the smoke. It is. It affected us.
On your magic machine, when the Washington Association of boundary review boards conferences. And associate of boundary reviews.
Yeah, Whiskey Creek is like what, twenty three hundred acres, man? Wow. Twenty-five percent contained. I remember when it was just five acres when they first started reporting. Seems like fifty-four. Thousand acres was the Eagle Creek?
No, I think that's about it.
Well, and it's, there's so many on, twenty-five. You know, there's so many fires going on. They have to, there's one that started four miles directly north of our house. And we didn't even know that, but the helicopter.
It was small, but it was there. We were on it quickly.
Yeah.
Whiskey Creek is just going out where there's no structures.
That's.
Just the trails, basically.
Oh.
You know.
It's just sad to see a burn though. Yeah.
Well, and terrain up there is, if you've hiked that, that hermit creek trail is. I wouldn't want to fight fire with that. Even if I was forty years younger.
I love you too much, I'm Jack Ror.
There was an interesting presentation by DNR and the nature conservancy. And the different picture in African forest.
Do you?
Situations on the east side, you say.
Well, some people do go. Yeah.
And it's a pretty dismal picture.
I, I know my nephew, he works for Disney in Florida. And he actually works from home, but he goes in one day. And that's it.
Or, or only civil cultural practices.
Yeah, so.
Planting single species in a high density is just not what you do on the east side. That's what we've done in the world. That's not.
Eight years ago or so, there was conversation between the Yakima Nation and the Gifford Pincho about the state of their forest there. Right, the Yakima Nation.
Scary stuff.
It is, and it's not getting any better either.
Can you hear us, Johanna? Go ahead, go ahead.
Of course, it would help if I unmute myself. I, I'm just saying hello.
Okay, can you hear us?
I just want to say hello, that's all. It's been a while. That's it.
Okay.
So you're official? Thanks. At six o'clock, let's get started. Call me door. Good evening, Ben. You want to run through our online participation guidelines? Although I don't see anybody.
Can certainly do that. So for those in the audience, if you'd like to participate in the meeting, we ask you to get the attention of our chair before. Proceeding and those online the same way. To get the attention of our chair, you would hit star nine if you're on the phone or raise your hand if you are using the zoom function. At the bottom of the screen and then when you are acknowledged, we'll ask you to unmute on the phone. That is star six on the screen. That will be the little microphone icon. Toward the bottom of your zoom screen. The planning commission likes to run a clean meeting. If the chair needs to, he may cut the individual comments off after three minutes and disruptive individuals may be required to leave the meeting. Persistent disruptions may result in meeting being recessed to a later date or time, location.
Thank you, Ben. And we have our public comment period for items not on the agenda.
Good evening, Mary Rapar Stevenson. Thank you, Chair, for recognizing me. I'm hoping that's not how we have fall weather, but it's because the mushrooms are out. I'm, as you know, I'm running for commissioner. I'm on the ballot in November and I've been introducing myself to all the various groups in our communities. Of course, you know me here. I visit often enough, but some of the things that I've been talking about are broadband. I, I really think that our whole county should have broadband from high to low. And it's, it's a necessity. It's no longer a luxury and it would really help people to develop their own businesses, to run their businesses better perhaps. For kids and schooling, et cetera, et cetera. So I wish we would work harder on that and if elected, I will. And the second thing is yesterday I attended a function and I spoke about undergrounding of light poles. I really think that that is something we could do in our communities because with climate change and the harsher winter conditions that we've been suffering or weather events. We have been, I think it would be safer for our communities and for the staff that has to take care of those light poles, especially when there's an event like. Last winter's ice storm and twenty seventeen, et cetera. And we do live in the national scenic area. And it would make it way more scenic if the poles were undergrounded. It always amazes me how once you rid your facial. Picture of poles or anything that sticks up or goes horizontal, how much more space you have. And I, I think that would be good for our communities and we need to start it and have it coordinated with all the work plans. So we don't have to rip things up all the time. I, I would like the planning commission to really think about climate change and to put climate change on your agenda. So that every project that you are, you look at, you have a climate change section. Because it's here. It's affecting people. It's affecting lives. It's affecting wildlife. And seriously, I mean. I, I can't remember Stevenson talking about climate change. So that and. I, I did want to make one comment about Lasher Street. I look at Lasher and I see those very short driveways and it drives me nuts. And putting a sidewalk there and it's going to go on the other side apparently. Which would actually take down a really nice forested area that the law, a part of which belongs to the old Marash property. And it's a really nice, I, I walked in there and talked to the owner the other day. And it's a really nice secluded area and with this new proposal for a sidewalk, that would be chopped up and all those bushes that afford privacy. And just shadow where wildlife likes to live would, would be gone. So, you know, in the future. I don't think condos should be built with driveways that don't permit sidewalks. No, no houses should be built like that. Both sides of the street should be open to sidewalks. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mary.
Oh, one more.
Sure.
As you know, I'm the past president of the Washington Association of Boundary Review Boards and I invite all of you. To attend our boundary review board conference. It is our annual conference. It is all online. Registration is open. It's a hundred dollars. And, and there will be a lot of new information about annexation from our attorney and. I want to say I R A is that it, it's the new annexation rules and stuff. So that's on October twenty-fourth. Again, it's all on Zoom. And the Washington Association of Boundary Review Boards, you can register on that website. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Any questions from here? Okay. We're going to the approval of the minutes. Folks had a chance to review the minutes of our last meeting. Do you even remember when we got there?
Too long months ago.
I have read the minutes and I make a motion to approve the minutes of the June tenth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Thank you, Anne. Is there a second?
My second.
Yeah, a second from Tony. Any further discussion, conversation, amendments, deletions, clarifications?
Accurate. As far as we can remember.
Yeah, Joanna does not, as far as we can remember, Joanna does not. Okay, we've got a motion to approve the minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Ben? We're going to be trained.
We're in your hands. Training. So open government is something the state of Washington takes seriously. There are two. Statutes in particular that we go over and we're asked to go over as public servants. The Public Records Act and the Open Public Meetings Act. You guys have been, all been doing this long enough where at least the concepts have been shared once or, once or twice. We are required to do trainings on them. See, so we'll put those on occasionally. To, to review them. I've got in front of you as far as the packet goes. A memo that's. Sets these trainings and these efforts in the context of what you guys already do or do otherwise. So. The Open Public Meetings Act is one that you see how this goes. We often will run these as roundtable workshop style meetings and. Chair Breckel is very willing to allow public to participate in the meetings as if they're members of the planning commission to come to the best resolution or the best ideas. So. That is a far cry from the type of smoky back rooms that people were worried about and mob interactions that were happening. I guess that would have been earlier than the seventies, but the, these sweeping laws came in the seventies and they were worried about those smoky back deals that could happen. We're not doing that here. You guys run things differently, very open. You can access us online and participate from anywhere in the world as long as you have connection to our connection and Zoom. So it's different, but it is still a very key principle. These laws are referred to as the, as sunshine laws. Based on a quote from a former Supreme Court Justice of the United States saying that sunshine is the best disinfecting. And so if people know what's going on, then the bad things that were happening won't happen. So that sunshine comes into our meeting rooms, that sunshine comes into the public records that we have to. Not going to spend a lot of time on the training that I included in the packet that is included at the link. That was, was sent out in advance to, and that link is to the Attorney General's guidance that they provide for all Washington agencies. Before the meeting, Jeff had talked about all the number of times that he's had to sit through similar trainings and efforts on this for all the various state boards that, that he's participated on in the past. State board boards are subject to this, just like you are. What I do want to underscore in all of this and, and probably I tried to after the meeting, after watching some videos. Are some of those key concepts about what a public record is, what right of privacy you all have in fulfilling your duties as planning commissioners for the city. And then also what a meeting is between you all as planning commissioners and what action is. So those are key core concepts of both of these to really get straight as you undertake what you're doing there. So. I've got us queued up to watch videos. Is that something that would be helpful for us? Okay.
Sure.
And then we can pause and chat about anything as questions come up or. As we apply to things that we've dealt with here at the city in the past.
Yeah, in, in these presentations, you know, they're, they are still fairly high level and I know. That oftentimes there are questions that get come up as, as you do this. I can remember. I was going to get training on a state board that I was on and we were talking about our, our use of our personal laptop computers. And basically the outcome of that was. Your personal laptop computer is subject to. Disclosure if in fact you're using it for official business. So. Is our earphones, is Mary, well, so I basically. Have a computer that I have dedicated simply to public business and not any of my private business, simply to protect my own privacy. So. But that's something that, you know, intuitively, I think as you, as you look at these presentations. You might not get that message. It's sort of the practical aspects that come up. And I think when you have those kinds of questions. It's probably a good idea to give Ben a call and say. Hey, am I, am I in a gray area here or have I crossed the line somewhere?
Yeah. And similarly. It was only three or four years ago where we started creating city email addresses for planning commissioners. Before that, it was all going to personal emails. Which in the same way subjects that person an email box to the, the search for public records. It may be that there are no responsive records within your emails, but they're still subject to sunshine. So. Pulling those planning commission specific ones out, sending them only to your plan commission, city email is what we've tried to do, when you all tell people. Okay. Share some. Okay. This one is the Public Records Act.
Hi, I'm Bob Ferguson, your Attorney General. With me in this video is the Open Government Assistant Attorney General Nancy Creer. This training video provides a basic overview of our Public Records Act for both records requesters and state and local agencies. It's intended to provide greater understanding of the legal requirements around the act. The Public Records Act is a law created by an initiative vote of the people in nineteen seventy-two, which provides the public access to the records of government agencies. It receives seventy-two percent of the vote. The purpose of the act is to provide the public full access to information concerning the conduct of government. Mindful of individuals' privacy rights and fulfill the desire for the efficient administration of government. The law is based on the principle that open government is essential to a free society. All state and local agencies must comply with the Public Records Act. All public records must be disclosed unless a law exempts records or information. There are well over several hundred exemptions. Some of those exemptions are listed in the act, but many exist in other state and federal laws. The act is a broad mandate interpreted in favor of disclosure and its exemptions are narrowly construed.
This training presentation is based on the Public Records Act and the Attorney General's advisory model rules. The rules are online at the Attorney General's website at www.atg.wa.gov. They provide examples of steps to comply with the Public Records Act. An agency may adopt any part of the model rules into its own rules. Local agencies should consult the model rules when establishing local Public Records Act ordinances. The model rules provide comments that are useful for interpreting the Public Records Act and for training agency personnel. The model rules are non-binding, but they are based on extensive outreach, court decisions, and have been cited favorably in some cases. The model rules were updated in two thousand seventeen. The public records act in two thousand seventeen and the. Also under the act. The developments in the law after this video is prepared. Several updates. Our done that page also provides training on the. Training video contains sixteen short segments where we review history, purpose, and intent of the record act. Scope of the area. General obligation of an agency. What is a record? Requests for records. Initial agency responses. Reason of estimates. Adequate sources. Disclosure. Electric records. Managing requests. Exemptions of holding. Fees. The record provisions. Liability. Finally, additional resources. You have just heard from the Attorney General about the history, purpose, and intent of the act. The act regulates the disclosure of public records. The act hires disclosure of public records unless a law makes withholding of a record or a record. The act has many components and compliance for testing training. Training can be the difference between a satisfied requester and a litigation. The act applies to both state and local agencies. State agency includes every state office, department, division, bureau, board, and commission. A local agency includes county, city, town, municipal corporation, special purpose district, and other forms of local government. In some cases, an entity which is not an agency can still be subject to the act when it's the functional equivalent of an agency. This determination depends on whether it performs a government function, receives government funding, the extent of government involvement or regulation, and whether the entity was created by government. Courts are not subject to the act. Agencies must appoint a public records officer responsible for being able to contact the public and for overseeing compliance. The name and contact information of the public records officer should be published with information on how to submit requests for records. The public records officer must have received training on the act within ninety days of assuming his or her duties. Agencies must also publish information on the agency organization, rules, and procedures, and index of specific categories of records. Agencies are required to adopt reasonable rules to provide full access to public records. To protect public records from damage or disorganization, to prevent excessive interference with other essential functions of the agency. And to provide the fullest assistance to inquirers. Agencies may wish to consult with their attorneys when developing their rules and procedures. A public record is any writing relating to the conduct of government which is prepared, owned, used, or retained by any state or local agency. Regardless of physical form or characteristics. It could be an email, text message, paper, letter, or memo, an audio or video recording. A picture, image, map, or any recording of information or data compilation from which information may be obtained or translated. A public record is not just what an agency creates, but includes documents created by citizens or private companies that are used or received by a government for a governmental purpose. A public record may also include documents not possessed by the agency, but which were used by the agency. For example, the courts have described that work documents on the personal computer, personal cellphone, or personal email account of an agency employee or official. Are subject to request under the Public Records Act. Records of certain volunteers are excluded from the definition of public record. Records are excluded when they are not otherwise required to be retained and are held by volunteers who do not serve in an administrative capacity. Have not been appointed by the agency to an agency board, commission, or internship, and do not have a supervisory role or delegated agency authority.
Pause there and hold this. Also giving you the permission to ask to pause a bit or two. So one of the exemptions that she talked about there was that the record isn't required to be retained. And that seems like a easy enough. Statement. The retention schedules, Dan's, what's Dan stand for? Document.
Hold on. I'm very new to this.
Yeah, the number of Dan's numbers, numbering system, the numbering system. That are in the retention schedule is sixty-five pages or something like that. And each one has their own. Time periods for retention. And so the point that I'm making with that is it backing up Jeff, it's very high level, which is. But.
Disposition authority number.
Disposition authority numbering system.
That's a new acronym.
It's complex.
So I have, I have a question from the first, first part, which is who is our public records officer?
City administrator is our public records officer.
Okay, simple enough.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and, and part of the reality too is with all those Dan's. Sometimes you just, you just keep everything. And things pile up.
Yeah.
And then you. If you really have courage and you don't have anything else to do, you can go through a purge, but like, you know, I, you know. In a lot of the agencies I've dealt with. It's just exercising that, that level of caution.
Yeah. Stick in the box. For example, something may be X number of years. After the life of a building or employee or something. And so there's no way to know when this document. Can be destroyed if it's related to this building because there's no way to know when that building has ceased to be, or the employee has ceased to be. So, yeah, it's. How often does the city get a public records request? Very, very often. Oh, interesting. Weekly, certainly.
They're online, aren't they?
I believe the. One was online.
I thought the records were posted online. When I made mine, she sent me to someplace and I thought they were.
Yeah, I'm not the public records officer, so I don't know specifically. Yeah, I'm not the public records officer, so I don't know specifically what those
Any person wishing to inspect or copy public records of an agency should submit the request to the agency, preferably in writing, using the agency's request form. The Public Records Act doesn't prescribe any official format for a valid request, so an agency must honor valid requests for identifiable records regardless of the format of the request. While using an agency's form is not required, it is typically the most efficient way to submit a request. A requestor who chooses not to use an agency form must give the agency fair notice that he or she is submitting a request for public records. Agencies are required to honor requests received in person during an agency's normal office hours or by email. If an agency has adopted reasonable rules on how requests should be submitted, the agency may rely on those rules. The agency should be helpful to the requestor in explaining how a request should be submitted and to whom. Records shall be available for inspection and copying upon request for identifiable records, so requestors should give a reasonable description of the records, enabling the agency to search for potentially responsive records. A request for all or substantially all of an agency's records is not a proper request for identifiable records. A request regarding a particular topic or containing a particular keyword or name shall not be considered a request for all of an agency's records. A request for information is not the same as a request for public records. The Public Records Act does not apply to requests for information. There is no duty to create a record that does not exist in order to fulfill a request for records or information. However, requests for information are at times easier to fulfill. Fulfilling a request for information may avert a large public records request. An agency must promptly respond to public records requests. Within five business days of receiving a request, an agency must respond. An initial response may be any one of the following: acknowledging receipt of the request and providing a reasonable estimate to respond; or fulfilling the request; or providing an internet address and link to the records on the agency's website; or seeking clarification while also, to the greatest extent possible, providing an estimate of time for further response if the request is not clarified; or denying the request with an accompanying written statement of the specific reasons. Reasonably clear requests for identifiable records may require no clarification. However, some requests are unclear. Seeking clarification permits the agency to identify responsive records, which in turn will aid in determining the scope of the request. Clarifying a request provides the fullest assistance to the requestor so that the requestor receives and pays for only those copies that are desired. Clarification may also result in prompt disclosure by identifying only those records desired. An agency should not seek clarification if the request is for identifiable records and is reasonably clear. If the entire response is unclear and the requestor fails to respond to the agency's request for clarification, the agency need not respond to it. However, the agency must respond to those portions of a request that are clear. An agency may deny a "bot" request, which is a request that was automatically generated by a computer program or script when it is one of multiple requests from the requestor received within a 24-hour period. The agency must establish that responding to the bot request would cause excessive interference with other essential agency functions. A requestor is typically not required to provide the reason for a request unless a law necessitates additional information from the requestor. Agencies and requestors are encouraged to promptly communicate with each other if there are issues regarding a request. An agency's initial response to a public records request must provide a reasonable estimate for the time to respond when more time is needed. A reasonable estimate should account for many factors, including the time to have the requestor clarify the request if needed, as well as time to assemble and review the records, provide notice to affected persons or agencies if needed, to redact exempt information, and to create a withholding or exemption log. An agency should not use the same estimate for every request. Rather, each reasonable estimate should be based on factors such as the complexity of the request, other pending requests, agency resources, and other agency essential functions. It's a good practice for an agency to briefly explain to the requestor the basis for the estimate in the initial response. Extending the estimate is appropriate when circumstances have changed or additional information has come to light. Agencies are encouraged to briefly explain the need to revise an estimate. An agency bears the burden of showing that its search was adequate. Consequently, agencies should be able to document how a search was conducted, and, for example, what search terms it used, as well as the location searched. An adequate search depends on the facts of each request, but it is one that is reasonably calculated to uncover all responsive documents in whatever form, paper or electronic. An agency must make more than a perfunctory search and follow obvious leads as they are uncovered. The search should not be limited to one or more locations if there are additional places where responsive records are likely to be found. If responsive public records are likely to be found on or in an agency employee's or official's personal device or account, the employee or official must search those devices and accounts for responsive records. It is possible to conduct an adequate search and still not locate a responsive document. However, if a responsive record is not located and/or if challenged in court, the agency will have to prove its search was adequate. An agency must make records available during its customary office hours for a minimum of thirty hours per week. Public records are presumed to be open for inspection and copying unless a specific law exempts the record or information from disclosure. Agencies can deliver copies of records to a requestor in a number of ways, such as providing links to the records that are on the agency's website, providing paper copies of paper records or scanned copies of paper records by mail or making them available for pickup, or providing electronic records by various methods. You may recall that with respect to what is a public record, the Public Records Act does not distinguish between paper and electronic records. Most agencies create records in an electronic format. A copy of an electronic record should be produced in the requested electronic format if reasonably feasible. Translating a record into an alternative electronic format at the request of the requestor or scanning a paper record is not creating a new record. Metadata is information embedded in a document that provides detail about the document's characteristics. This may include information such as when the document was created, edited, recipients, and so forth. Non-exempt metadata must be disclosed when expressly requested. When agencies obtain new technologies, they should consider not only the agency's business operation needs, but also records retention and disclosure requirements. Examples of such technologies are portals through which records can be requested and delivered, electronic redaction tools, or retention software, just to name a few. In addition, agencies can look at whether they could make use of their current technology more robust. The legislature encourages agencies to make public records widely available electronically, particularly commonly requested records. For example, an agency could make commonly requested records available on its website. Then, as noted earlier, an agency could fulfill its obligation to provide access to a public record by providing a requestor with a link to a specific agency webpage containing the electronic copy of the requested record. For requestors without access to the internet, an agency could provide a computer terminal at its office. Agencies should develop policies addressing technology concerns, such as if and when agency employees may use personal devices for public agency uses, and what responsibilities and requirements therefore attach to the employee. An agency may receive a broad request that asks for any and all records related to a topic. Agencies may not deny a request solely because it is overly broad. As noted, a request for all or substantially all of an agency's records is not a valid request, but a request for all records regarding a particular topic or containing a particular keyword or name is not a request for all of an agency's records. After an initial search shows there are potentially hundreds or thousands of different types of responsive or potentially responsive records, a public records officer should contact the requestor to explain the estimated total number of records that would need to be searched, or provide other information describing the anticipated scope of the search. Then the agency could seek clarification to ask if the requestor wants all of the different types of responsive records and is willing to pay for all the copies, or instead if the requestor is seeking only some of the records. Good communication can assist both the agency and the requestor. A broad request will usually result in a longer estimate of time for disclosure, as well as producing records in batches or installments. When seeking clarification, to the greatest extent possible, the agency must provide a reasonable estimate of time the agency will require to respond to the request if it is not clarified. In many instances, a requestor will narrow the scope of the request to enable the agency to provide disclosure more promptly and less expensively. An agency may manage broad requests in a couple ways. An agency may require a deposit in an amount not to exceed 10% of the estimated cost of providing copies for a request. If an agency makes copies in response to a request available on a partial or installment basis, the agency may charge for each part of the request as it is provided. If an installment of a records request is not claimed or reviewed, the agency is not obligated to fulfill the balance of the request. Finally, use of electronic technologies to search, review, redact, and disclose public records can reduce overall costs of compliance for agencies. Agency responses denying in whole or in part inspection or copy of any public record shall include a statement of the specific exemption authorizing the withholding of the record and a brief explanation of how the exemption applies. Exemptions exist throughout the Public Records Act and other state and federal laws. Common exemptions include information such as: personal information in files maintained for agency employees if private, pending investigative files compiled by law enforcement or agencies with authority to discipline members of a profession, the nondisclosure of which is essential to effective law enforcement or for the protection of any person's right to privacy, educational records of students in public schools, attorney-client privileged information or work product related to litigation, or protected healthcare information. There is no statute providing a general privacy exemption. If privacy is an express element of a specific exemption, it is only invaded if disclosure would be both highly offensive to the reasonable person and also not of legitimate concern to the public. Exemptions in the act must be construed narrowly. The general rule is that an agency redacts or withholds only the exempt information and produces the non-exempt information. An acceptable way of providing this information to the requestor is with a withholding index, often called an exemption log. The information provided as part of the log should include a description of the type of record or part of record denied. The description should include identifying information from the document. For example, whether the document is a letter or email, the date the document was created or other relevant date, the total number of pages, and the sender and recipients. The exemption log must also include the statutory authority making the information exempt and a brief explanation of how the exemption applies. Some of this information will be evident on the face of the document where redactions have been made to only part of the document. An exemption log, the written explanation, also may be provided in different formats. For example, maybe handwritten or compiled in a spreadsheet or chart, or in a letter, or redactions are marked on the records with exemption codes, and the requestor is given the key to the codes. The format of the exemption log or exemptions is not relevant so long as the required information Any person may inspect non-exempt public records for free. An agency may not charge for the time of staff to search, review, or redact public records when preparing them for inspection. If a requestor wants copies of records, an agency has options to charge for copies. It can charge actual costs, or it can charge default fees listed in the Public Records Act, or it can charge an alternative up to $2 fee for an entire request. Some other provisions may be relevant, too. In order to charge actual costs, an agency must make available for public inspection and copying a statement of the actual per-page or other costs and how it determined actual costs. An agency may adopt its statement of actual costs only after providing notice and a public hearing. When calculating fees, the agency must use the most reasonable, cost-efficient method available to the agency. Staff time to copy and deliver the requested public records may be included in an agency's costs, but an agency may not include staff salaries, benefits, or other general administrative or overhead charges unless those costs are directly related to the actual cost of copying the public records. An example of when an agency may want to charge for the actual cost of staff time is where an agency scans paper records and copies them into an electronic format. The charges should be reasonable and related to the wage of the person likely to be repeatedly assigned to this task. If an agency does not have staff available to make copies, for non-exempt records, an agency may send a scanning or copying project to an outside vendor and pass on the actual cost to the requestor. Electronic copy costs may include the actual cost of the electronic production or file transfer of the record, the use of any cloud-based data storage processing service, and the cost of transmitting electronic records, including the use of a physical media device. A second method to charge copy costs is for an agency to choose to use a statutory default fee schedule provided in the act. In that case, an agency need not calculate actual costs if it has rules or regulations declaring the reasons doing so would be unduly burdensome. The statutory default fee schedule lists, for example, per-page costs for paper records, scanned records, and costs for electronic records. As yet another alternative, an agency can assess an up to $2 flat fee for an entire request when certain conditions are met. The act includes other fee provisions. For example, an agency cannot charge for access to or downloading of records routinely posts on its website prior to the receipt of a request unless the requestor has specifically asked that the agency provide records through other means. An agency may impose the actual cost of a customized service charge when the request would require the use of IT expertise to prepare data compilations, or when such customized access services are not used by the agency for other business purposes. The agency must notify the requestor and take other steps if it chooses to do a customized service. An agency can require an advance 10% deposit before making copies. An agency may enter into a contract, memorandum of understanding, or other agreement with a requestor for an alternative fee arrangement, or in response to an extensive or frequently occurring request. An agency may choose to waive any charge pursuant to agency rules and regulations. Upon request, an agency must provide a summary of the applicable charges before making copies. The requestor then may choose to revise the request to reduce the number of copies and the cost. In sum, the Public Records Act provides an agency several options for assessing charges for copies. The choices selected may vary from agency to agency. Under a different law, the Records Retention Law is at RCW 40.14, agencies must maintain a log of public records requests, including for each request, the identity of the requestor if provided, date of receipt, text of request, description of records produced, description of records redacted or withheld, and the reasons for doing so, and the date of final disposition. With respect to the identity of the requestor, it is possible an agency received only an email address from the requestor, and if so, that address would be included in the log. The logs must be retained per the agency's records retention schedule and are a public record. The Records Retention Law also provides that agencies spending at least $100,000 to fulfill requests during the prior fiscal year must report seventeen data points about their PRA requests to the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee. to the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee. Under the Public Records Act, any person having been denied an opportunity to inspect or copy a public record may seek further review in the agency. The person may also file a lawsuit to enforce his or her right to access public records. A requestor can also file a lawsuit if he or she believes that an agency has not made a reasonable estimate of the time or of the charges to provide public records. Such a lawsuit is to be filed in a court within one year of an agency's final definitive response to a request, such as a final claim of exemption or the last production of public records on an installment basis. The agency has the burden of proof to demonstrate that public records were lawfully denied or its estimates were reasonable. If it does not make this showing, an agency will pay the requestor's reasonable attorney's fees and costs, and may pay potential penalties for denying records in violation of the Public Records Act. A court will consider mitigating and aggravating factors in determining a penalty amount. Lawsuits for public records can be extremely time-consuming and expensive for agencies. Understanding and correctly applying the law is a good risk management tool for state and local government. In rare cases, individual employees may also be civilly or criminally liable under other laws. State agency employees and state officers are subject to the Ethics in Public Service Act. It is a violation of that state ethics law for a state employee or officer to intentionally conceal a public record required to be released under the Public Records Act. State agency employees and officers may be fined up to $5,000 per violation of the state ethics law. It's also a crime for any agency officer to willfully mutilate, destroy, conceal, erase, obliterate, or falsify any record of that agency's office, except where the law expressly authorizes the non-disclosure or destruction of records. The crime is punishable by imprisonment of up to 10 years or a fine of up to $5,000, or both.
Thank you for participating in the Attorney General's Open Government Training. For more information, there are available resources for agencies to receive training and technical assistance for compliance with the Public Records Act. An employee should first consult with its agency's public records officer for routine assistance or training. Additional resources are listed on this website. The Assistant Attorney General for Open Government is also available to provide information about the Public Records Act. Thanks again for watching.
You made it through one. I'll go through the first one. Okay. Do you... Where to leave the conversation? What are the following questions?
It's all pretty clear.
I have a question.
Yeah.
The... So it mentions personal computers and telephones. I'm familiar with, in business, having phones subpoenaed, and they take them away. But in this situation, if someone's requesting information that they believe is on our phones or on our computers, isn't it our own public records officer who is going to try to find that information?
Right. The duty is on the city's public records officer to do a reasonable search for all of those writings, those public records, with the emails. Since we have the backend, the access to all that, they can search through your email and provide responsive records that are in the email. And then if there are leads, like they talked about there, any reasonable leads from what's produced in those records, that there could be some other file, then the duty of that public records officer is to keep pulling on that lead, and so they've completed a reasonable search for it.
And do you know of that happening in the city where phones have been interrogated?
I...
Yeah, if they have been. The one concern you'd have is that, okay, if my phone needs to be looked at, how long are you gonna have it? Does it now? I mean, if it's in a lawsuit, it's gone.
Yeah. I don't know. When I've been asked to produce records on the... From the phone, it's often that the requesting record talks about any information, document, text message, communication, et cetera. And so then, public records officers question to all the cityers, do you have any text messages? And relies on you to fulfill your duty to not willfully withhold the public record, so.
Doesn't seem like it's a big concern, though, in the city.
It's more of a county concern. Quite a number of requests at the county level.
For telephones? All interesting.
Ben, I think one of the segments here talked about the responsibilities of an employee. Planning Commission members are considered an employee of the city, yes?
Employee or officer, I think, is that lumped term as an officer of the city. So that, when... What I do like to read in these is the intent of the laws as they were adopted, and that's something that's in here, and they're strong, you know, they're real. So, the people of this state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies that serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. And the people insist on remaining informed so that they may maintain control over the instruments that they have created. The public records one, that's common between both of these Acts. The public records says, "The free and open examination of public records is in the public interest, even though such examination may cause inconvenience if a phone is seized for a long time or embarrassments of public officials or others." So, you all as politicians...
That's not good.
Oh my God.
I mean, he's gonna try and drive away.
Oh, no.
The pole, don't you call it?
Yeah.
Oh my gosh.
Can we go see if anybody needs help?
Yeah.
I'll go with you, Charlie.
My gosh, I think he hit the curb.
Yeah, that's what I... I thought he hit another person.
Was he going up the hill?
I had to sort of emergency the place of the inspection.
Is he going up the road?
Well, he's gotten out of his truck.
I think it's a kid.
Dumb shit. Excuse me, French.
Oh, no, maybe not a kid. That looked like a kid.
He was taking the curbs too fast, and he hit that curb.
He hit the curb on the left side?
Did that?
On the pole, right.
So he was going uphill when he hit it, huh?
Yeah, yeah. It's toolbox, so. Then he did hit the pole.
Oh, the pole's broken in half.
Is it a... It's not... Is it a PUD pole?
It will be, yeah.
So it's electric?
Yeah. Yeah, it doesn't look like the line is down, but the pole is broken.
Yeah, it's just a PUD.
Oh, kid.
Oh. Hopefully he wasn't texting and driving.
Oh, gosh.
Well, I haven't seen an accident in a long time in person.
I said, I thought you yelled at us, weren't you?
Well, you know, I was sitting, I was sitting at home. I was, I lived up here, a few houses south. And I'm sitting there, and I hear this crash. And then I go outside, and there's a turned-over car in Joanne's yard, John Chuba's yard. And somebody's calling up. I'm inside, and somebody's calling out the window. And they... So I called 911, and it was kids.
Yeah.
And that, and they just drove driving.
Understand.
I mean, they were just lucky because what happened? They just kind of rolled over the embankment. So they weren't going too too fast. It could have not been pleasant.
Poor kid. Died. So, well.
And everybody probably knows him.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's my biggest fear.
Like, he bounced really near.
Yeah. Poor guy.
Yes, well, he woke us up.
You're all in his sleep, so you're not anymore.
Well, I just think if the poles, the electricity would have been underground and everything, it wouldn't have hit anything.
Yes, it could have gone down into the forest.
Power lines.
I just thought it would be just two kids living in a room.
They're not on the ground. They're low. I'm not sure. Yeah.
Yeah, I...
It may be.
Is that transformer up there?
I'm not sure if that's electric or cable, but...
Well, it's light for a PUD.
They control this meeting, Ben.
Yeah. Going to stop share. We had an accident outside of City Hall, so we're gonna take a recess and just pause the recording.
Back to work.
Back to work. Yeah. We got to witness the very fast response of our fire department.
Yeah, good job.
Force to the scene, so. Nice to see.
Thank you.
No one is hurt, or no immediate injuries.
Big fellow is okay.
Yeah, he's okay.
He's up walking.
Yeah, he's not walking around, so. Yeah, I am too. He's probably shook up pretty well. Yeah, he's sore tonight.
Yeah, they bounce. I break.
Okay, I think we'll just use that as a break to move on to the second.
Now we have adrenaline. It's gonna be fun. Have to sit still.
Second module.
Wasn't that AWC thing that the consul saw more updated?
I don't know.
Because this is 2017, and she talked about the 2022 update to the PRA.
The public and public agencies. Our purpose in this training is to provide a greater understanding of the legal requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. The Act was passed in 1971, a time of a nationwide effort to make government affairs more accessible and more responsive. The purpose of the Act is to provide the public access to information concerning the conduct of state and local government. The law is based on the principle that open government is essential to our free society. The Open Public Meetings Act gives the people of Washington State the opportunity to witness the deliberations and decisions of government. More recently, that's included an opportunity to provide public comment as part of that process. Multi-member governing bodies of state and local agencies, such as school boards, city and county councils, and the state commissions, must comply with the Open Public Meetings Act. The law states that it is intended that the actions of these governing bodies be taken openly and that their deliberations be conducted in an open matter. Meetings subject to the Act must be open to the public, gavel to gavel, unless the law permits a meeting or part of that meeting to be closed. Thank you for watching, and I hope you find this training informative.
One is shorter.
This training's purpose is to increase your knowledge of the Open Public Meetings Act. The OPMA is in Chapter 4230 of the RCWs, and this training incorporates updates from the 2022 legislative session. This training video contains 15 short segments. We just discussed Section 1, the history, and Section 2, the purpose of the Act. The remaining segments, we will view the scope of the OPMA, what is a governing body, what is a meeting, what is action and final action, travel and gathering, regular meetings, special meetings, remote meetings. We'll also talk about executive sessions, public attendance and comment, minutes, liability, as well as other laws, and provide some additional resources to assist you. The Act has several clear requirements, and compliance with them is improved with training. Training can mean the difference between meeting your agency's OPMA obligations and expensive litigation. The Act applies to governing bodies of multi-member public agencies, both state and local. At the state level, public agency includes state boards, commissions, committees, departments, educational institutions, or other state agencies, which is created by or pursuant to statute. Public agency does not include the courts or the legislature. For local governments, public agency includes any county, city, school district, special purpose district, or other municipal corporation or political subdivision of the state of Washington. Examples of these include city councils, county councils, school boards, and fire district boards. Public agency may also include a sub-agency of a public agency which is created by or pursuant to statute, ordinance, or other legislative act. A good example of these includes planning commissions, library or park boards, or commissions. A final group is any policy group whose membership includes representatives of publicly-owned utilities formed or pursuant to Washington laws when meeting together or as or on behalf of participants who have contracted for the output of generating plants being planned or built by an agency operating them. In some cases, an entity which is not an agency may still be subject to the OPMA when it is the functional equivalent of a public agency. This determination depends on whether it performs a governmental function, receives governmental funding, the extent of governmental involvement or regulation, and whether the entity was created by government. Some activities of public agencies are not subject to the OPMA. They include certain licensing and permitting activities, quasi-judicial matters, matters governed by the Washington State Administrative Procedures Act, and certain collective bargaining activities. All meetings of the governing body of a public agency shall be open, and the public and all persons shall be permitted to attend any meeting of the governing body of the public agency, except as otherwise provided in the OPMA, such as during a declared emergency. A governing body is defined as a multi-member board, commission, committee, council, or other policy or rulemaking body of a public agency, or any committee thereof, when the committee acts on behalf of the governing body, conducts hearings, takes testimony, or public comment. Agencies governed by an individual, such as a single director, are not subject to the OPMA. Meeting means meetings at which action is taken. Physical presence of the members is not required. A meeting can occur by phone or in some cases by email. I will talk more about email exchanges later in this training. A meeting does not need to be titled "meeting." The OPMA also applies to retreats, workshops, and study sessions. In order for there to be a meeting, there must be a quorum of the governing body. A meeting does not occur if there is no quorum.
And quorum is one of those terms we take for granted. Definitely one I had to look up when I first got into it, though. But for you all in the Planning Commission, there are five of you. A quorum is a natural majority, so three of you together can constitute a meeting, depending on this next segment.
So just a question on that. If there's not three of us, it's not a meeting? So then, how is that affected by the open meeting?
There is no meeting.
Yeah, there is. It's not a public meeting. And so, who of you get together and we're talking about zoning issue? That's not a meeting of the public.
You and I might do each other an A and J and say, what about the housing problem? And talk about it. It's not a meeting because we haven't taken any action, and we haven't had three of us in the room. You gotta be careful. Because you can have that conversation with Tony. Turn around 15 minutes later and have that conversation with Ann in a separate setting. Then it's a meeting. Then it's a meeting. Right, right. No, there's two people, wherever, wherever a majority is gathered, whether in one...
NJ is with him and meet, see me at Ace Hardware and have the same discussion. That's a majority.
That's a majority.
But if we come here on our regular Monday night meeting, and there's not three of us, do we adjourn?
Yeah, there's no meeting.
You never really call it an order.
We don't start a meeting.
We don't call the orders, so it's done. Okay.
Right.
Matter of fact.
We have talked about the fact that the OPMA applies to a governing body at a meeting.
The limits of all regular special meetings, accepting sessions, such as missions, agencies, authorities, shall not record in such or self-evident public access. The OPMAs does not require an audio or video recording meeting. Many agencies do so. Public agencies are encouraged to 2022 minutes to take audio or video recordings of meetings or provide online streaming option of all regular meetings of governing body and to make recordings that the agency does prepare. Available online for another segment. Violation of the OPMAs can be lost if it is not a C and its members. A court can impose a hundred dollars penalty as a personal liability against each member who knowingly violates the OPMAs and a thousand dollars penalty for subsequent violation. A court can assert any action taken at a meeting not held in compliance with the OPMAs, not void. And add horrible award costs and attorney's fees to a successful or seeking a remedy under the OPMAs.
That's personal liability, that's a check from Charlie or that's a check from Tony to. Presumably spear your court's system there for, for these violations, so. It's another one of those that is very broad and seats the responsibilities that you all bear.
To recap, this presentation covers the highlights of the OPMAs. Public agencies may be subject to other laws governing other particular meetings, hearings, procedures. Some agencies have particularized whatever that means as well. Like the OPMAs, the last concern is meetings here is also the imminent for time. Therefore, agencies are cautious and mindful of all current laws concerning meeting and hearing procedures. Thank you for watching the agency general's OPMAs training. For more information, there are always sources for agency specific training and technical assistance for compliance with the Open Meetings Act. An official should first install with the agency's counsel for any assistance training. Additional resources are listed on this website. This training is also available for information about the Open Public Meetings Act.
This young man is on the home legs here and looking at the movies off. Nice to see your face.
Okay, so again, the key concept we did kind of touch on, a meeting is anytime there is a quorum of you, three of you. It doesn't have to be that you're all three together at that same moment, so we can have serial meetings by hanging up the phone and calling the next person to deliberate with them. That deliberation and discussion is an action that you're undertaking as a public official, so. Don't do that.
Yeah.
Don't do that, there are penalties and. It's just not the way that. Sunlight shines on the governing institutions. The way it shines on the planning commission though is something I think you should be. The way you run the meetings, the way you involve the public, the way you're able to dive into details, repercussions of the policies that you're considering is great. Procedures for us, we talked about that at the beginning of our meeting. The chair can select or acknowledge and invite comments. We have all of our meetings through the Zoom function where the public is invited in to participate. This is different than the city council. City council provides a Zoom option and a YouTube option, and that YouTube option is static. Doesn't allow for participation, it doesn't allow for that member who may be there just to watch the sunshine on the actions of the city council, but then is inspired to say something or, or provide something that might be extremely irrelevant. There's not a vehicle for them to do that through Zoom, there is through Zoom, so we have it on Zoom and I will invite participation when it's desired, so. And you all operate that, that way in this open way and inviting the public to see what you do, to participate what you do. You've been doing that for a long time. In 2013, there's a figure from the comprehensive plan that was developed at that time that underscored how public education, communication, participation is a part of all aspects of the planning cycle, the different phases of undertaking a plan. In 2021, you recommitted to that by enshrining in your bylaws, public comments, or public involvement framework that has you when you undertake any new policy project, et cetera, to establish your conscientiously, establish your public involvement expectations for that project. So, these bylaws have a differing cycle about where that public comments might be sought and how it might be communicated and the impacts that public comment might have there. Their example, there's a menu of different types of public comment that you, or public involvement that you might select in each of those topic-specific projects and then a catalog of different methods or ways that might be used in the menu of options that you choose, so. I think that you all have all the tools and you're doing a good job with this one.
And I think, Ben, it's. We went through quite a process in terms of looking at how we engage with the public. It was a, it's a lengthy conversation and some work sessions, I think, for the planning commission. Now, it's number, probably even the public participated with us, but I think it was on the basis that we wanted that public input, we wanted to know what's going on and how could, how could we bring more folks to the table? Because I think we felt, we felt a little lonely at times that we were taking on some of these issues and we didn't seem to have any, any connection with the public out there and so on and so.
Yeah, this is good, clear, clear guidance. It's, it's common sense in how we roll, but also it's good to get the formal reminder about how it works.
And we are required to provide the trainings or to take the trainings as public servants, so we will note that you have all met your requirement for this cycle. I forget exactly how long, how often you have to do this, but on occasion.
That's good, beneficial.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's good, solid stuff. Unfortunately, I'll probably have to go through it again next.
We will provide you the minutes and you can.
You have to self-certify, I think we basically do it offline. I have to certify this.
You know, just parenthetically. It's not really an open meetings or, or public records issued per se, but I, I have found in my involvement in public life in one capacity or another over the years, that there's a real watershed where agencies started doing things online and, and newspapers started doing things online. And if you try to research an issue that happened before that watershed, it's like, it's the edge of the dragons, you know, I mean, here there'd be dragons beyond, you know, beyond this line on the map, it's amazingly empty. And, and the trouble is that stuff is in, you know, file boxes, wherever, you know, in the basement here or, you know, the archives, wherever they may be. But it's just, it's really striking, you know, I've been around this stuff long enough, you know, that I remember things that I was involved in in the 1980s and you go back and try to research what, why, why did they do that? And it's like the newspaper records stop, the public records stop, you gotta go find a file box. And it's really, I mean, it's not anybody's fault or it's not a conspiracy, it's just a consequence of how we changed from everything online all the time, which is how we live now, from, from a nothing like that before. And it's, it's striking to me and I don't have a fancy answer for how to solve that problem because agencies can't go back and digitize, you know, what they did in the 1940s, but you know, it's, it's anyway, for what it's worth, it's.
Go back that far and I, I can remember a lot of that stuff going to the archives in boxes.
Right.
But it wasn't really cataloged, it was a very general, he might have forty boxes saying, you know, this sort of general operating area.
Yeah.
But if you want some specific issue.
You had to dig.
Go through forty boxes.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's a real issue. For stuff that's, you know, long-term. Yeah, anyway, just, I've run into that issue, I'm just kind of struck by it.
The other topic I wanted to talk about with you all is one we talk about whenever we have a permit that comes to you when you're acting as the quasi-judicial agency, so when you're acting like a judge, quasi-judicial is that you need to be fair and impartial in how you make those decisions and you have to demonstrate your fairness of the potentiality, yeah. And so we ask you at those times whether you have any ex parte communications. Ex parte communications means communications that aren't part of the public record. And if you have, disclose what the content of those were so that your fellow commissioners can make a decision on that, so that the public can judge whether you're that they believe you're fair and impartial in the decision-making, whether you have financial interests or other factors that might impact that, so. Those aren't part of these open government laws, but they are part of the open government's expectation that's, that's placed upon his planning commissioners, so.
Yeah.
General practices for, for those are to not engage in the ex parte communications. That's not always possible, we do understand, but to disclose it when the time comes.
Thanks, Ben.
I have worry on that one.
Well, but I also think it's just important for us to, to remember because we're engaged in, in some of the activities that we know we're going to show up or are in front of the planning commission. Should think about our involvement, if we have some question as to what's, what's appropriate, what, what's appropriate for me to engage in? That if we have that question, we ask it before we cross that line.
Yeah, and we're here for it. And that, one thing I want to do as we've moved into doing some subcommittee work, things like the while the public involvement was a subcommittee initially, the annexation.
Thought that was going to be a subcommittee.
And parking, I'd like to. It's nebulous about how the, the OPMAs applies to that and the requirements that admins for those things. It seems like we can take away some of that nebulous aspect by formalizing it up a little bit more before we commission those subcommittees.
Sheriff's Department's asking if anyone else saw what happened.
Just heard it. You're the one, the real one witness.
Hit the curb and bounce, then everybody was a crash.
There he was, the witness. Oh, no, there it was.
And was sitting right in the south.
So. What's your conclusion on our, on our work groups or our committees, Ben?
To have a little bit. Allow you all to have a little bit more conversation before they're created to help set the, the parameters, the guidelines about where it goes so that a quicker turnaround in response might be there instead of that stringing too far and to keep minutes so that they can be reviewed by all members and, and the public to help the decision-making process a little.
But they don't have to conform as an open meeting, then?
It's nebulous on that, about which sub-agencies of these. Close the page on that, but the instruments that serve the public are subject to the OPMAs and which are not. Like Jeff said with the records, just keep them.
Aren't most committees a fact-finding and making recommendations, but action is not taken until
It's an action.
Reported to the.
Final action, but that deliberative.
But it is an action.
Yeah, deliberation is an action.
Okay.
So that's, that's the.
That's why it's nebulous.
Yeah, well, or that's why we probably have to err more on the side of formal process than maybe you would think we would have to, but, and I think it's just good practice. I mean, like you've been saying, Jeff, but, you know, for example, if, when and if we get back into the annexation issue, you know, when the city and the county get to the point that we've got a path to talk about that, I mean, I think there quite a few people in the public that would want to talk about it. Yeah. And we ought to invite them, you know, we, there's no monopoly of knowledge. So I, I think it would be good, you know, to, to the extent that we can be a little more structured and announce those, hey, there's an annexation subcommittee, it's going to be, it's going to talk. You know, I think it's not only compliant with the law, but it's just good practice, yeah. Eric.
Yes, because I ran across that with the Economic Development Council and can't tell you how mad it made me. Because I, I wanted to introduce myself as a candidate to the group. Now, this is the, our Economic Development Council, Escamania Council, that is run by Mr. Waters. And I was told that they were closed meetings and not open to the public, confidential. So I called the Mr. Damaro, actually that's where I, he's our ombudsman in the AG's office. And, and their Leiston County Economic Development Council actually has a lawsuit against them because they didn't comply with the PRA request, but there's, there's nebulous law about the meetings and that, but this is an agency that takes public money and acts as a development council here in our community. It's not something the county does or the city does. And they have closed meetings. And this is how agencies get sued. And it's on my radar now, but I, I just don't understand that. I didn't ask you for your records, I didn't ask to go in your, you know, when you were discussing loans and other things. I just wanted that three minutes at the beginning of meeting to see what you're doing. I go to the port meetings, I have my whatever comment and I can leave. But, but I can also stay and see how they conduct their business and how they're conducting their business. And I, I frankly don't understand how an agency that accepts public money can have closed meetings. You should at least tell the public what you're doing with that money and allow them a, a portion of time to ask, what are you doing with this money? It, it has really opened up my eyes, I'm, I'm not happy. It's like, I don't need another project, thank you very much.
Yeah, I think we run into, you know, those questions about, you know, how does it apply to a certain organization or what extent and what types of activities? And there's always going to be those questions out there, Mary. That's why you ask them, so. That's why you ask them, so.
Well, the more open you are, the less public records requests you get.
Okay, then let's move the agenda here.
Yeah, uh, staff reports uh on this uh tree preservation planning. We, I talked about this in the past, we've got uh funding from the State Department of Natural Resources to. Assess and plan for the conflicts between aerial utilities. Uh like we saw unfortunately now it's on the street today and our urban tree canopy, uh Mary made a comment on earlier. And so we uh are currently requesting uh qualified engineer assessment statements of qualifications. To assess the um who is best suited to dwell that plan for us, uh but we uh should have that. Plan done by um the middle of next year.
So who does this kind of a plan? Are you looking at an arborist or?
It's um, the effort to identify the conflicts uh is largely a G I S function. And so we will have uh knowledge about where the P U D has their power poles, how high up those power poles are. Uh, so we've got a location and. Got three dimensions on that.
Yeah.
We've got a resource of LIDAR, light detection and ranging uh data. That provides uh three dimensions for uh both the terrain, the land surface. And then also what's on the terrain, so this is, it's a plane that flies through the air and just shoots all these packets of light. And it tracks when that comes back to it, and so some of those light packets hit the ground and come back, some. Uh will hit the top of a building and come back and some will hit a a leaf and bounce back up, so the the receptor there, so. They're able to understand how tall the trees are, where the ground is, where the pole is, how tall the pole is. And do analysis of where there's uh conflict between that urban tree canopy. And so identifying the conflict is more the easy part of that. Uh, and then um we're asking them to identify what's currently being done to mitigate that conflict. So that the P U D has their crews that go out and then trim uh utilities, what's accustomed to that? Uh, what's the the risk of not mitigating the conflict, so. Uh largely this is a a thought of fire, so if that tree falls on it. Uh, there's the potential for fire and and destruction of the assets um in that area. So what's the threat or the the um quantify the threat, quantify what's currently being done to mitigate that threat? And then quantify uh what it would take to eliminate the threat by putting the trees underground, so. That is where uh it's more of an engineering um expertise is asked for. Of uh what what components are necessary to go underground, what what the typical cost for those for these uh.
Quarter, so this is, you're basically looking at.
That's the resource.
Your road system.
J D lines, so where there's not a road or where they stray from the road, there'll be something.
Sure.
Okay, yeah.
So utility right aways or road right aways both?
Yep.
Mr. Chair. I did a public records request for the P U V for the cost for five years of tree trimming, one point five million dollars.
Okay.
Um, and you you know, we should do a new one that was years ago, but. It makes sense to underground, to me.
Um, yeah, and so this analysis is only for Stevenson. And so when we are asking them to identify their their costs, it'll be cost divided by or. Multiplied by the proportion of their full system that's within the city, so less than that.
The tree falls outside the city limits.
Beyond the 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 area. Lasher Street is another one that we're um um moving forward with, this is um. We're moving into the design phase of that, we're beyond the conceptual phase, uh moving into the design phase. Uh, we had state money to do that, so Lasher Street is on uh the west side of. West central side, so um this side of Rock Creek, but very close to it. Uh, it serves a thirty-six unit affordable housing community at the top, you got. Affordable housing community is served by Lasher Street and another street, and none of those have a sidewalk anywhere near them, so. Uh, this is providing a sidewalk on Lasher Streets uh taking uh children. Um, families uh and set there uh to Vancouver Avenue. And getting closer to schools, there would still be a gap between uh the elementary school and Lasher. For those that wanna walk.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, this is not as much of an issue right now, because the school's closed, but that's. We all hope a temporary condition.
Yeah. So um working out the um scope um. And deliverables with that engineering, design engineering consultant uh currently to get that going, but that'll. Uh, we're going hot over the winter, you're in through the fall into the winter. Uh, First Street Overlook, that construction is uh underway currently, so. First Street on the east side of town has been closed for about a month, um. I don't have uh any idea right now of the total schedule, but. Things are moving quickly on that as far as uh concrete goes, they've got the the curves all uh going and. Much of the sidewalk itself done, there's an overlook that has a sub uh consultant, some contractor. Uh, that has not or had not as of last week, and I'm starting construction on on that overlooked portion, but. Uh, comes together, should be done um before the weather this winter also. Sewer system upgrades is that's um, that's three words that describe uh suites of probably six projects. That have just been a bear for city staff to deal with, so. Uh, that's upgrades to each of our pump stations. Each of those pump stations is itself a project that requires design and contractor management and uh. Contract management generally, including contracts with the funding agencies that are allowing us to to do all these things, so. That's uh US Economic Development Agency, that's US Department of Agriculture, um. But that's uh State Department of Ecology, all had funding into this, I think there may be one more than I'm forgetting about, but. All of those have separate uh responsibilities, so again, sewer system upgrades is three words that doesn't nearly describe the level of effort. And a lot of stuff and the level of celebration our um our staff is going through is each one of those advances closer and closer. Uh, done, uh the sewer plant uh is definitely the biggest, most expensive of all of that. And it's nearly done, but still some of the final um electrical pieces that would allow us to turn it on are coming into place. So um. I think substantial completion for that is before the start of next year.
It's been the supply chain issue basically, right?
That's that's the report, yeah. Uh, yeah. City Administrator, uh Leana Kinley has submitted her letter of resignation um la- just over a week ago. So um she's given a thirty day notice for uh, the last day will be the thirtieth of this month. Still figuring out what the uh the short and the long term plan are. Um, in the short term, I'll be absorbing some of the duties uh that she has and honors. Uh, will be absorbing some of the other duties and we'll figure out uh what to do to. Replace her or where that position, how that position might morph, um so. A lot is TBD on on that front. And it. Yeah, we'll just figure figure out how that goes. Oh, I didn't mention on Lasher Streets, I included an example of the the public engagement that we did on just the staff side. This wasn't written by uh the planning commission, but reached out to those residents of that. See if a lack of sidewalks was a problem for them, or if sidewalks would uh help their safety. And they did, um, and uh we asked them which sidewalk would be the best, and they said Lasher. With uh anything to improve that situation for them.
Did you have a pretty good response in there?
The response rates for these questions in there, um about half.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a good one, we we posted, we worked with the uh manager there, had a paper copy posted on the door, it had a Q R code already. So both options and then went around later to to collect it. Yeah. Satisfying.
Yeah, some good comments.
Uh, the shoreline permit that you all approved for Rock Cove Development uh withstood its appeal. Uh, that decision is attached for you there, and so um. I think the start of the conclusion there is on page eighteen, essentially that. The um, the appellate didn't sustain their burden of proof that that your action was not in the public's uh interest. Or um implementing the city's S M P or the state uh Shoreline Management Act, so. That's done now, um the appeal is done now, there's. There are some appeal rights uh related to that, and I don't have that calendar in front of me to know exactly.
And I have an attorney looking for my options, thank you.
September thirteenth, so it's not fully done, but this um part of the decision uh has been made. And we'll see the um how that project uh will or won't move forward after this.
Yeah, and I I think it's worthwhile for us to go back through and 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 read the report from the shoreline's hearings. In terms of what their rationale was in terms of reaching that conclusion. I think it's always important to know.
Right.
You know, what did they see?
Yep.
And you know, how did that contrast with what we saw as in making the decisions here at the at the at the planning commission.
Then on the thought of the month, I just gave you a link for what some cities, some states are doing to try to block the transportation. Uh maintenance funding gap, and so this gap is um. Pretty well articulated across um all states that uh we rely on a gas tax uh to pay for the maintenance of our roads. As we get more efficient, that's less gas um that's uh purchased. And less tax that's paid on that that's purchased, and there's still wear and tear on the roads. Um, and so some states are uh looking to uh delivery. Companies to help fill that gap, interesting one, so that you. If implemented, uh there might be another line item on your Amazon purchases, it's a delivery fee of some sort.
You live in Stevenson, so it's gonna cost you more.
I don't, that'll help a little, and so some entity has the probable courage to enact a mileage tax, which is the only solution. Because of electric cars and it's like, it's not gonna work anymore.
What I find interesting is, I have a pickup truck that I've had for quite some time. And you know, it's, it's got an eight cylinder engine in it. I also have a plug-in hybrid.
Right.
It cost me three times as much to license the plug-in hybrid as it does the pickup truck. Now tell me, where's the logic?
Where's that, where's that money going?
That may be, that may be an attempt by state, I don't.
It's basically, it's basically going back into in the highway maintenance, but you know, it's if. If you're trying to provide some incentives we have in terms of, you know, government rebates.
Oh yeah, no, it doesn't make any sense from that.
It doesn't make any sense.
No, no, it's all these cobble together, all the D O Ts are cobbling together solutions and.
Yeah.
It's only gonna work a little while longer, but you know, maybe I, maybe if speaking about. Uh, uh, some, someone may be thinking in some D O T, I'll retire and then they'll digest. Cause it's hard, look at what New Yorkers went through.
Oh, you know, they tried to do congested pricing and then flew it up.
Yeah, yeah, so hard. Yeah, I'll, I'll be interested to read that, you know, how much, how much will that Band-Aid help?
Uh, Ben, I got a quick update question if you can, and that is the Parks Plan um. It's general status and what's the latest on our courthouse plaza?
The Parks Plan was adopted, um. The uh State's Recreation Conservation Office issued its call uh for grant proposals. Um, for most of the their programs that apply to our Parks Plan. We submitted preliminary applications for two projects, one was the Courthouse Plaza. And one was um easement acquisition through the Adams Trailer Park at West Waterfront. That way connection. Uh, the preliminary application for the Park Plaza project was pulled from consideration by the city. Uh, with the the lack of clarity about the project and how that might move forward. The um acquisition project did not score well in the second stage. And I, I need to follow up with our head manager to see if that is uh final, there is no funding. Or if there are still decisions that are made in the course of that, I think it's final if there is no funding, but I haven't had a chance to to follow up on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so uh as far as outside funding coming into uh complete any of those. Park improvement projects, it doesn't look like there's anything at this time. May still be some um. Another of those um six-year projects was looking at um landscaping and. Uh, the gateways, so the two, where the two couplets come together and then the um. Uh Gateway Park in front of the Chevron Station, so uh that's. I don't know of any outside funding sources there, so I wouldn't need to be in eternal one always, and could still consider something.
Yeah, I I guess I'm not surprised that that acquisition, the right away acquisition didn't didn't score very highly.
Yeah.
Given, given, you know, the type of projects that we see reading in those programs. You know, if it was part of a bigger, more comprehensive package, I, you know, I think. Got a bit more traction.
We've been pretty successful writing grants, and what I often say about them is the the good ones write themselves. This one didn't feel like that.
Yeah.
Uh, this one didn't seem to write itself, I think with. A couple refinements in um in the vision there, so essentially the vision right now is we need a um easement. From here to over there. And we don't have a good idea of what facility we will put in reason to justify. The width of the easement or a specific location, and that specific location over there that you needed. It's several changes and unknowns with the highway, and so. Doing a little bit more scoping, a little bit more identification of of those things.
Of what you're getting, what what the value is that you're gonna get out rather than just a right away.
Yeah, this one did not write itself.
Columbia Avenue.
Columbia, um, there hasn't been any real talk about action uh for that yet, um neither in a. Uh, let's move on from that sense or in um, let's pursue the next step, so it's been something that's just been backburn.
And broadband?
And broadband, um. Also, so if. We have more knowledge, we have than we had um three years ago. We have more momentum than we had three years ago. And we are at the same spot that we were three years ago. Uh, there's not a natural leader that's stepping up to do a broadband system for um our area. Uh, so the city's looking at how it might step up to only serve the city interest. But then there are these components that are outside the. Link a system together, so.
Um, if you build it, they will come.
There's. A model um that is generally done is to partner with a um internet service provider. Uh, to. Demonstrate the need that we've demonstrated with the the studies that we've done and apply for that suite of funding that's um should be coming. Uh, soon, and that means committing yourself uh to them, it doesn't mean an exclusive franchise or an exclusive sort of arrangement. But it does um. Mean. Partnering with that provider to ensure that there's a um dedicated market for them to. Uh, receive the reward on any investment that they're gonna make on their behalf and through the the federal or state funds that might come to it, so. Some preliminary discussions with uh Blue Mountain Network, who uh merged with. And preliminary is exactly that preliminary, um they're a company that wants to expand and. May do so with goods for them. What that expansion looks like or how the partnership would even be structured. Uh, the natural partner is the incumbent here that's astound, uh wave astound. And no conversations uh with them so far about the potential funding that I've had the the city on behalf of the city. Uh, it could be that they're talking to the county.
That's interesting too, because you know, there's so much. Volatility and in in these internet companies in terms of how long are they gonna last, who's gonna buy them, you know. Who's who out there? You you want a credible partner. And I think being a somewhat rural community in a fairly small market. We we're probably not a standout candidate for some of the stronger organizations.
Now, P U D doesn't want to do it.
Yeah, with the option that a uh public agency could become the internet service provider. P U D uh had an assessment of what it would take for them to stand up that as a program and they said no uh to that, they're not gonna uh do that.
It was flawed.
Mary?
A nugget of information just for your for your overall benefit here. I called the Senator or Representative Harris's office uh one day because. Taking off, I was seeing all these Oregon plates in our in our community here. And I talked to Summer uh Sheriff Shire about the issue, and I said, when are you gonna put up that roadblock? And start finding these people for having out-of-state licenses when they live here? And she said, I can't do that, or the state police has to have to do that. So I called the the Harris's office and uh his assistant was a font of information. We lose eighty million, all these that are that are living in Washington State, but have Oregon plates. And that eighty million over ten years, that's a lot of road money. And that that needs to stop. I don't know if Stevenson can do something about it, but it needs to stop.
Real money.
Yeah.
Million here and a million there. It was a billion, actually, the original line.
Any other, any other business, Ben?
I have nothing else for you.
Anybody else? Any thoughts you wanna share?
Just uh was, is there any update on uh River Church resubmitting?
They um have not resubmitted. Uh, they are. They've been working with the city attorney about um all of their options and. The option that they're leaning toward right now is. To. Pursue it as an existing, either in as a continuation of an existing non-conforming use. Or as a accessory use, which is commonly associated with a church use and therefore. Shouldn't need to go through um planning commissioner review. In substantial in itself and commonly associated with. Haven't been presented with any specific um. False action.
We'll see. I wanna say, yeah. Anything, anything else?
You need a motion.
I need a motion.
That we adjourn the meeting. Do you like the hint? Do you need a motion?
Looked like you did.